Good evening. The regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could you please read our mission and vision statement and take roll call?
Sure. Our mission statement is at Richmond Community Schools we provide quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. And our vision statement at Richmond is to foster a culture of academic excellence, creativity, character, ensuring that all students are prepared for success in an ever-changing world.
And then Board Member Cunningham?
Here.
Board Member Mashan?
Here.
Board Member Sutton?
Here.
Board Member Teltow?
Here.
Board Member Steyer?
Here.
Board Member Gillis is absent with notice. I am one on the fourth tonight here. We do have a quorum. And we have our student representative Elizabeth Schaper is going to be a little late with notice. And then Kelsey McGrinara is not going to be here tonight.
Thank you.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda with a couple of amendments. First is because Elizabeth is going to be here around 7:30 after cheer practice, I'd like to move Student Board Report Item Number Eight, move it down after Action Item, so it will become Item Number 12, just renumber everything. And then, under the Consent Agenda, I'd like to make a new Item D to pull out of the Personnel Report, approval of Julie Robbins, Special Ed Resource Room Teacher, High School, Middle School. That is an individual that I have to abstain from voting on, so I want to separate that from the rest of the Personnel Report. That's it.
Do I have a second?
Of course.
Thank you, Danielle. Any discussion? Okay, this will be a roll call vote. Mr. Wonsley? We're just doing the agenda? Oh, sorry. You're right. Okay. Okay, Candace?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Raymond?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. I'm sorry, and I screwed that up too. Sorry, guys. I'm looking for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda Items A through C.
Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Mr. Wonsley, any discussion or anything we need to know?
Yeah, in the Personnel Report, we have a couple of new hires. Karen Dalton, student support paraprofessional. Sarah Dishinger, student support paraprofessional. We have two middle school, two special ed teachers. Melissa Henshaw. And one is being moved to the second letter, Julie Robbins. Sherry McGregor is also a student support paraprofessional. And then we have the appointment of Kelly...
Shemel Fennig.
Shemel Fennig, I apologize. Secretary to the Principal. Couple resignations, baseball coach for freshmen, Michael James. Allison Mens, student support paraprofessional. Laura Ottega, Spanish Club of Lead. And then you have my retirement in the package for formal. I'm going to see a couple of new appointments that have already been hired by the board. There were no questions regarding the November 10th regular meeting or the November 17th special meeting ordinance. And then you also have the headcount fault, Fany. What was I going to call it? Sorry.
Any discussion on the board or questions?
I just want to recognize, I'm just going to say Kelly Bass. I'm not going to tell him to say her last name. But she's a Richmond grad, so that's kind of cool and exciting that she's taking on that role at the middle school.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, this will be a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Raymond?
Aye.
Sarah? Oh, sorry. Danielle?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. I'm looking for a motion for the hire of Julie Robbins. Right? Any time? Or aye? Okay. Okay, so Candace said it. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, guys. Any questions? Okay, this will be a roll call vote. Candace?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Raymond?
Aye.
Margaret?
I have to abstain, I am related to Julie Robbins.
Thank you. I vote aye, motion carries. Okay, next item on our agenda is our Blue Devil Raves. Here we go, let's see. Sandy?
I, just real quickly, went to the Dracula matinee on Sunday. And it was a really good show. It was really fun. But I do want to, I do want to point out that this, I think, is the first show I've ever been to here where there was absolutely no hiccups that I noticed with the tech room. And they indicated that it was all run by students, so I just feel like they deserve a real pat on the back. I did not notice not blowing a hiccup with that, so it was awesome. It was a really great show, everybody did a great job. But I just wanted to make sure that I said something special about them.
Thank you.
Can I just add that Ian O'Neil, our IT, has been working with kids who are interested in the tech side of the theater?
Okay.
So that's why we got some of the students in that tech.
Oh, okay, all right, very nice. Yeah. I mean, usually there's, like, there was no, like, crack of the mic, no static, no... I mean, there's usually at least something, right? Like, I think that happens even in the professional world. But this was, it was, to me, it was seamless, so they did a great job.
Thank you. And Margaret?
Yep, I went to the play Saturday Night and they did a great job. And then I want to just give a shout out to the middle school for the Veterans Day Assembly, to Ms. Morello, Mr. Knight, Mrs. Shaq, and Mrs. Chlor, and Mrs. Gardner, the teacher that was responsible for the students getting everything together. One neat thing, there were students that had prepared cards for any veterans that were there that day. And they walked around and gave veterans cards. And my husband being a veteran, it was just a really cool touch for the students to walk up and share those cards with veterans. So it was just a really, really nice event. So thank you to them.
Candace?
I'm on set tonight.
Danielle?
I just had two small ones. I wanted to say thank you to the VTO at elementary for putting out the penny quarters that finished up at the end. It was a lot of fun with the new house system and fully power. I saw the numbers today and how much they raised.
How much did they?
They raised enough that each student will get $9 during the Santa shop.
Oh, great.
But I don't remember the, all the totals. But they were in, like, the $11,000 range for each, like, point totals for each house or something around there. But big numbers. So it was very cool. So that was a lot of fun.
This was the pennies that they're no longer making, right?
Yes, the pennies are no longer making. Exactly. So we'll have to call it something else next year. And then also, thank you to Ms. Maeguni for stepping in to hold the stop sign and risk her life in that parking lot in the morning when Ms. Nichols was out the one morning. And she did that flawlessly, so that was great. And all the questions and the notices of, oh, no, Ms. Nichols isn't there, but she occupied in there and, you know, took care of it, so that was great.
Cool, thank you. Raymond?
Not beside.
Okay. I too just would like to comment on the Veterans Assembly. It was a very, very special event. The band and the choir were just phenomenal. The music was really, like, kudos to both of our directors, Stacy Flor and Miley Shaq. They did a very, very nice job. So whoever put it all together and everything, it was, it was well attended. The place was filled, so thank you for doing that, and it was, it was very well received. Okay, next item on our agenda, we're going to jump to our Superintendent and Legislative Update. Mr. Wonsley?
Okay, I'm going to start with district stuff first. So for district updates, just to update the board and community, we've been working with the REA to get the two calendars finalized for '26 and '27. Those should come to you shortly after the first of the year, given that we only have one regular board meeting before December 30. But we are very, very close with the goal of trying to get as many much instructional minutes as possible with kids and so forth, so we're excited. It's been a long time coming, but that should come through. Reminder to the board, next Tuesday we get back from break is the Palm County School Board Association Dinner Meeting. If your schedules change, you're more than welcome to join. If you have not been able to our RSVP, right? That might be a little more challenging for you, so I apologize. I too went to the musical, like, that I went on, or played on Friday. I just thought they did a great job, and I love seeing more and more of the students take ownership of, especially the tech room, the set building, which is a good thing. For the Richmond, again, as a partner with the Richmond Community Theater, they have an upcoming production of Scrooge. We received several tickets for the December 7th and 14th performance, so the staff responding back, so we're going to get those out. But I encourage everybody to go to the other performances they also put out at the Richmond Community Theater. They, the reason why we partner with them, they do a lot for our theater program with props and sets, and so it's just a great partnership to have. Believe it or not, when we come back from Thanksgiving break, it's going to be December, so our holiday band concerts are coming up. December 9th is the high school holiday band concert. And the middle school is on December 16th. Both performances are 7:00 and will take place at the auditorium. Choir is coming up on December 10th is the high school holiday choir, and December 15th is the middle school holiday choir. Again, those concerts start at 7:00 also. We are partnering with the Richmond Lions Club on December 13th. We have breakfast with Santa, typically it's housed at St. Peter's. It's going to be at Richmond Lee Elementary School. So if you're, if you're little ones, you can give your last chance plea to Santa, make sure that he's been good. Santa will be there. We were over there today, maybe draw all the logistics, we're coordinated. So really looking forward to that. Our food service department will be providing the food. We've settled our student volunteers, we'll be helping that day from NHS and all the organizations at the high schools, so... Again, the holiday season starts off officially in this area. The Red Kettle Bar or Red Kettle Collection starts. So if you're out doing your holiday shopping on December 20th, Saturday, December 20th, or Tuesday, the 23rd, I'll be outside Kroger. So stop by and pick up your last holiday dish and so forth, drop some change in the bucket. It goes to the Salvation Army and a lot of our needs in our community, so I'm honored to participate in that every year. Just a reminder that schools will be closed beginning this Wednesday for the Thanksgiving recess. We will open back up December 1st, so wishing all families rested and grateful Thanksgiving. Legislative update, really, the only thing that just has been on the radar, it's cards in the news, is, we talked about it previously, is Section 31A. I know, the board members know, I've tried to keep them in the loop of it, on the process. It seems to be evolving and changing by the hour. But in Section 31A, the law that was passed when they passed the budget, there were some things in there that are questionable in terms of whether they are violating the Constitution, as well as some other amendments, et cetera. So the MISDs took the spearhead of this, and they filed a lawsuit on behalf of the districts of McComb County, as well as several other MISDs joined. And last week, the judge kind of put a stay in the ruling from the perspective of districts have to say whether they're going to opt into 31A regardless of the position by December 4th, by 11:59 on December 4th. The judge will have cases adhering to the decision and issue it by December 19th. If the lawsuit does not go in the district's favor, districts have between the 19th and December 30th to opt out of that process. So if we don't opt in by the 4th, regardless of the position, we lose the money regardless this year. But you can opt out after the 4th, really, through December 31st at any time. So I know that's on the agenda tonight. There's four resolutions for you to consider. It's not phrased as a superintendent recommendation. This is really a board's decision that you guys have to make and so forth. So pick one of the resolutions. The last one that you should have gotten in front of you is the one that I sent to you last week after the board packet was sent out. That's the latest resolution that allows us to opt in. And then if, basically, we lose in the hearing from the school district side, that allows, basically directs me to opt out. So that's what Resolution D is, in that packet. Other than that, again, just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And when we come back, it will be December 1st.
Sure. Thank you very much. Okay, next item on our agenda is items of interest from the board. We'll start with Danielle this time.
I'm sorry, I...
Oh, sorry.
...debating on where to take this topic. But I believe this is more related to the understudy, so that's why I won't bring it up. Brian, can you just kind of tell us a little bit more about what's going on with this health education standards framework? It's, I know that we don't have a sex ed program, so are we exempt from all of this?
Generally, when the state board approves standards, and let me preface by, we've received no guidance from MDE to this point, although then they had hearings on these standards and that it was approved by the state board. That's all the information we have. But generally, once they approve them, then there is a process of, schools go through the curriculum review process, and adoption process, and that integration. Where, where the, and I'm not versed on those standards. I've seen parts of them, but I'm not versed on all the standards. I'm kind of cautiously saying certain things. Where it's appropriate to our guidance, or our curriculum, we would update our standard. Some of the contents is because we're an abstinence-only district and we don't teach sex education. Some of those, we won't teach or address because we don't, we don't, we haven't gone on that road.
And we don't have a committee for that.
Well, if the, if the board says we want to move from a non-abstinence-based to a sex ed, there's a process. And one of the pieces is you have to have a committee. It's defined on who has to be on that committee, so all of that would have to get put in place. My experience in my previous jobs is that is at least a year and a half, two years process. Once you're established in the committee, studying kind of what the framework is, you're going through and looking at the curriculum, you're going through and deciding what you're going to teach and so forth. It's a process, doing all, all the components. So it's nothing that they say we're going to implement next year. There's no way that would happen this year. There's a process, so...
And so about the health curriculum itself, just focusing on that, that, that wouldn't change either until...
Our agenda is the health, and a lot of those courses were just done in the electives that were not part of these new standards or guidelines, thank you. So it would come up generally in the next cycle of review, unless there's something that is mandated that we have to take action soon. Sometimes they'll pass in the law, like you have until October 1 of 2026 to implement it. Like, for instance, coaches have to have certain training in concussion and so forth, so they give you a period of time to get your ducks in a row and get everything lined up before it comes into effect. Appropriate training like that, those are past leagues that we've had to do. But it's never, you know, unless it's legislatively mandated that it has to start by a certain date, generally through the process of the curriculum adoption.
But all of that would run past the board at some point before anything that we put in place?
If, if there's going to be a change to the health curriculum and that we do curate it, that would have to come to the board, like Billy does with all the elective courses, the court classes, and that would come at that point. Though health was just done last year.
Yeah, I mean, really, we're just implementing. We're still working through putting our current one that we just purchased in place. I forgive you, we've got it for one most years.
Which is all based on the previous standard.
Right. So the teachers have just started to, we're kind of, our process is doing a little crosswalk. People are seeing what we're, for ourselves, going through and seeing where are these differences. And again, there's that whole section of the sex ed piece that we aren't, we feel like that's, we don't, so...
Okay, thank you. Just some clarity, because, you know...
Yeah, even like when they look at the state curriculum, they approve the math standards or the science, I mean, science is a great example. It took years before the assessment was even lined up to those standards. It was recent, about two or three years ago, the assessment finally started measuring the science standards. It's a, it's a long process.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, next item on our agenda is our items of interest from the board. Danielle?
I'm good.
Candace?
No, I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and just grateful for everybody who comes and makes good choices for the children every day in our district. And thank you for everything.
Raymond?
Yeah, I would just like to add that, you know, last week, we had the, at the special meeting, and I would just like to request, if possible, that even during the special meetings, if we could schedule the camera or the TV to add or to cover that, those meetings as well. There's a lot of great dialogue regarding the, you know, the process that we're going to take for hiring the interim, and then also for the more permanent position for the superintendent role. I just think that, like I said, there's a lot of great dialogue there that even though the public is invited to come, sometimes it gets really late and the special meetings are out of cycle, so to speak, they're not due every two weeks. I would just ask if we could find a way to ensure that all of our open meetings are covered, don't be a video.
Now, is that, that's not anything we schedule, though, is it? Is it, don't we, do we send the notice and then they come if they want to come, and they don't if they don't?
I have never called to schedule it. I send, everybody gets a notice out there?
Yeah.
And then they schedule to cover now?
Right.
And that, that meeting, that special meeting last week has been on our schedule since January, so that didn't just pop up.
I don't know that we can schedule it, though, I guess, because, like, we're not paying them for that service.
That's correct.
I, I...
Right, well, I'm just looking at if, you know, if we can look at, into having all of our open meetings covered by video.
Well, that's, that's like I mentioned to Candace last week. If that's something you, like Candace mentioned she wanted it, then you have to reach out to Richmond TV and contact them yourself and ask them to come to do that, because it's not something that's normal. They're choosing, they're picking and choosing when they want to come as a courtesy to the community. It's not something that we're scheduling them to do. It's not something Brian's asking them to do, or somebody in the district's asking them to do. It's something that they're doing personally for the community. So like I told Candace last week, if she wanted it, she could have asked them to come. But it's something that you would have to ask on your own. If I wanted them to come, I could contact them and ask or confirm. If there's something I see on the agenda, I could say, hey, I just want to confirm you're going to be there this week because I see something important on the agenda. But it would have to be on our own will to go and confirm with them, unless they're listening right now to know that. But, you know, that's just, that's on your own terms to do that. It's not, it's not something the district coordinates.
Right, their, their service. They don't confirm, like, they don't call that day and say, oh, we'll be there tonight. Like, that doesn't happen?
No. They're, they have...
It's a service.
For however many years we've had our meetings filmed, I don't know, 15-plus years, they come to regular scheduled meetings. That's what they, the service, or however you want to do that, to what Danielle said. That's, that's what they schedule.
That's their decision.
Correct.
Because they have been at some, they have been at some special meetings in the past.
Couple of different times.
So, yeah.
But not because we've asked them to come.
No, I know, I know, that's what I'm saying. But like, they, they are looking at the agenda, I guess, and figuring out if they want to come or not.
And decide that looks good, we're going to send, who knows?
We send them, like, all of our events, like, sports schedule, we send them award schedule. They come or not come. So I guess, I guess it's based on programming that they, they decide. I don't know how that board or that small group at the city operates, but we send them, we send them everything to say, hey, here's another event you can cover.
Okay, so I, so I just, I've been cautioned before, you know, in regards to as an individual board member, you know, reaching out to agencies for one thing or another. And I was told that, you know, that's not for my place to do so, that the board's actions work through the president and through its motions. And so to hear that I can individually, as a, as a board trustee, reach out and request this, then, okay, then that's my answer. But I, I just didn't know that that was a process. And so, I guess, thank you. But if, if we as a board, or as a, you know, if I'm as a president, can request that, then I would like to do so. It was a vote.
I just want to clarify, I think there's kind of two, two roles here, right? If the board right now were to take action, say, we want you to meet, you request, then you guys are voice of board, and I would do that. If, that hasn't been the practice for at least 12, but probably more than 15 years. As an individual member of the community...
That's what I was going to say.
Things as were Danielle's, like, you have the right to contact the city and say, hey, why are you, why are you covering, why are you not, however that conversation goes. As a trustee, I don't think you'd address them as a trustee. You'd be more addressing them as a community member from that angle. Because in that case, the, the voice and the policies does come through the president rather than individuals. So just, just a little clarification, as a member of the community, anybody can reach out and say, hey, why are you filming, or we'd like you or not to film it, however. Hope I just clarified, I didn't mean, just a different role.
Yeah, well, that's, well, that's, in part, that's what I'm looking for. So if I reached out, you know, via email, whatever the case, and said, hey, I'm Raymond Steyer, resident of Richmond, I'd like to request this, versus, hey, I'm Raymond Steyer, trustee on the Board of Education, I'd like to request this. So if, if that's the difference, I mean, okay, that, that's the difference. Thank you for that. I appreciate the, clearing that up for me.
No problem.
Okay, anything else, Raymond? You said it?
No, I was, thank you.
Thank you. Margaret?
No, I'm good.
Sandy?
Just real quick, want to say that we did secure the date for the staff appreciation for May 1st.
And?
Yeah, well, Mani Atchis or Macy's, I don't know, however, some people say it differently, but that is...
I think we need to find out what their official, what they want to be called.
Yes. Yeah, so I just wanted to real quick say that, I mean, there's more information coming, of course, but that, I just want to make sure that the date's out there, which Danielle did send an email to staff, but I just, you know...
And it is on the district calendar, too.
It is, yeah, yes.
You print that out on your fridge?
Yep.
It's also on that date.
All set. All set.
Okay, I just want to update our community on our search for our superintendent. We did meet with Billy last week and discussed her jobs and duties and other things like that, who could fill in, things like that. I know that Mr. Wonsley and her have been meeting and are going to meet with the union, and I will have more information...
and I will have more information at our next meeting as far as what packages and things we've put together. All of the staff, all of about 112 community members have received an invite to attend our reception for Brian, so those are all out. I am in contact currently with M A S B, and we're going to be looking at Michigan Leadership, but M A S B reached out to me about doing a presentation to the board, which is what we already talked about doing. They have agreed to have someone here on our January 5th meeting, and then I'm reaching out to Michigan Leadership tomorrow. But that's where we're at right now in that process. Okay, I think that's everyone. Okay, next item on our agenda is public comments. Since the last board meeting, the board has received one email. This email was from a middle school parent expressing their appreciation and thank you to the middle school administration for the Veterans Day Assembly. This email was forwarded on to Mr. Walmsley, our board members, and to the middle school administration. There were no public comments that needed addressing from the last board meeting. At this time, any member of the public will have three minutes to address the board. Please sign in and state your name. If you wish a follow-up, please provide contact information on the public comment sheet that's on the podium. Are there any public comments? Okay, being no public comments, we will move on to our action items. I am looking for a motion for the approval of the middle school courses.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve Theater 2, Creative Tech, and STEM and Agriculture as courses to be operated at Richmond Middle School and be placed in the 2026-27 Middle School and High School Course catalogs.
Support. Thank you. Any discussion?
I'm just going to put, take it down. I've heard her before, I've heard mine.
Any discussion?
No, I'm excited. It's exciting. And the first step, our first time with the new process, so thank you, Billy, for that, and these classes are exciting.
Okay, this will be a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Raymond?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. I'm looking for a motion for the resolution summer tax collection.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and impose a 2026 summer property tax levy to collect all school property taxes in each city or township in which this district is located, as outlined in the attached resolution.
Support. Thank you, any discussion?
This is something we do every year, collect our tax in the summer, we don't split it between winter and summer. We do this for years.
So this comes all in one one sum?
You'll get your sum, yeah, so we'll get, that, that helps with our cash flow, so that we'll get the summer taxes before we get the state aid payment, so we don't have to borrow money. So I typically do it in the summer.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote. Sandy?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Raymond?
Aye.
Sarah, I'm sorry, Sarah's not here. Danielle?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Okay, I'm looking for a motion for the approval of a Section 31AA resolution.
Resolution D, I move to approve the attached resolution to opt-in, subject to rescission as outlined in the attached documentation.
Support. Okay, any discussion?
Yes, I.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead, Ray.
You know, I'm just, what is, what is the difference between the option C and D? Because previously, C was that we would be able to opt-in, but then if the courts didn't rule in a favor, you know, then that would rescind this. And then from what I was seeing in your email, it had a brief explanation, D was similar in nature, but what is, what is the difference, please?
Well, C says decline, declined opt-in, unless waiver condition is met.
So prior.
But C as in Charlie, not B as in.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll read a different one.
Resolution C says we're going to decline opt-in unless there's a waiver. So basically, when that was presented to us a couple of weeks ago, the extension of the December 19th opt-out was not even in discussion. So we either were going to accept, decline to opt-in tonight, and then if between tonight and December 4th, something changed legislatively, that would have given me the ability, since they took the condition out, that I could opt-in. That's not happening, the, they're, it's not happening. So then, when the lawsuit was filed, what was agreed upon by the attorneys of the plaintiffs of the lawsuit, and the attorneys in the Attorney General's office, and the Governor's office, and M D E, they agreed that if districts opted in by the 4th, that would put them to get the money this year. But if the courts overruled and said the districts, nope, the law is good, then it gives the districts the option of opt out. The difference is the law says the states, the schools have to have the money by December 30. So what option D, or resolution D, will allow us to opt-in, get the money, if the lawsuit loses, we have to return the money back to the state, but we're still, and we're not agreeing to the, we're basically opting out at that point. They've given us a second opt-out between the judge's.
Decision.
Decision on the 19th and December 30th, we can opt out. Where resolution C said we were going to decline opting out, opting in, we're going to decline the money, but if something were to happen before that deadline date, you gave me the authority to get in there so we can keep the money this year. Regardless of what resolution, if you aren't opted in by December 4th, you will not get the money this year.
So this way, we're able to opt in, which I was actually really grateful to see this, and then be able to rescind our opt-in as long as we do it on or before December 30th.
And the issue is going to be, is we're going to see on our state aid payment in December, Section 31A, and they're going to give us the money, and basically, if we opt out after that before December 30th, they're going to take that money back from us.
Right, but we get to rescind that decision, and when we, when we rescind it, that's like it never happened, that's what rescission means, that that never happened. So that way, we're no longer than waiving our.
Right. Attorney.
Our attorney client privileges, yeah, privileges.
And the other piece is that this, this was filed in federal and state court. This is really the state courts that we're hearing from, we're getting, I mean, federal could be coming out any day or within the next week, so this gives you, if the board doesn't want to lose the privilege, that I don't think anybody in this country would want to lose, I mean, the basis of our constitution, D is your best option, because you could say, no, you're, you're going to keep it, then we're pulling back, take your money back, we aren't on the hook for any string.
And we just have to make sure, just want to make sure I got this part correct, we just have to make sure that we are rescinding our original opt-in before the 30th of December.
Absolutely.
So my question is, is, okay, what are we actually looking for in this lawsuit? I mean, we didn't like any of the language.
So what the lawsuit focused on, what they, they believe in the attorney is illegal, which basically means your ability to talk to an attorney is private. If I was, you know, and I got in trouble and I want an attorney, my conversation's private. What this law says is that conversation's no longer private, and forgive me, it's been a while since I've read the amendments, but it's like the 14th, the 4th, and there's a fifth one, there, there's several amendments that say this is a violation of the Constitution. And that part of the law is what they're asking to be ruled unconstitutional. The judge could say the whole law is thrown out, the whole Section 31A law, and they got to go back to scrap, there's no district that would get, we'd all be returning the money. But what they're asking for.
But it's not that it's put in place by December 30th.
Right, what they're asking for is just the part, what they went to court for is the part where you do not waive your privilege. We are not disputing that if, God forbid, something happens, that we are, we have to cooperate, or we aren't even going down with what defines a mass casualty.
That was my other question.
None of that is what they're, what the law is, what they're, they're fighting for. What they're fighting for is waiving the privilege, that is illegal.
Unconstitutional.
Unconstitutional, thank you. It would be criminal.
And so all the other is below that, it starts there with the unconstitutional.
But they're just, they're, they're just.
And then below that, it just trickles down, so even that is going to be wiped out, too. What's considered a mass? No.
No, no, no.
It's considered a casualty between.
No, it's just, the lawsuit is just that the.
Unconstitutional.
Waiving the privilege is unconstitutional, that part of the law. Everything else?
We weren't happy with any of it.
Oh, there's a lot that we're not happy with, but from a legal's perspective, fighting in state and federal court, that's the, the best argument, because it does violate the Con, or it's my opinion, the judge will make that decision, but it violates the Constitution. And that's what they're arguing.
So let's say they kick that part out, just the constitutional part out.
But would not be a casualty definition.
Say that again?
Not the mass casualty.
But, but from what, from what I'm understanding what Candace is saying, and what you're saying is that this, 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 you know, Section D or Option D only is pending the, the rights waiver, correct?
That's it.
That's it.
Not the, not the definition for mass casualty, or that the, or that the governor can create an investigation committee or whatever, her investigation.
That is.
Or future, that would still remain.
That's correct, but if we have a, that is correct, but if we have the protection of our attorney and our attorney private, you know, attorney client privileges, then, I mean, they, they could be fighting those things for us in that, you know, at a later date if we needed them to, I suppose. Go ahead.
From a, from a legal standpoint, the argument why they filed it in federal and state court was the attorney-client communication, and having to give that up is unconstitutional. That's the leg that, that they're standing. The other stuff, there's nothing constitutional in question that they could do that. The legislators and the governor pass, now, if someone challenges that later on and say, I'm not going to give this information because that's not a mass casualty, and we believe the interpretation is this way, and you're going to have someone on the other side say, no, we believe it's this way, then that's going to play out in the court of law.
With your attorney's.
At, at, at the, whatever the next mass casualty event happens.
Yeah, so clearly, I'm not an attorney, but, yeah, I just, I.
This, this, this was, you're headed by.
Yeah, to me, this, this kind of is like a traffic stop, right? And then a police officer said, can, hey, can I, can I, can I search your vehicle? You're, you're being given an option to waive your rights to a board amendment, and this is the same thing, it's, it's a request to waive your rights. And so I don't know that, you know, clearly, it's a court.
What, what rights are we waiving?
Yeah, what rights are we waiving?
If we decided to go with Option D.
The, the, yeah, like.
No, we're not, though. That's, that's the one thing that we're, that we would, that we could rescind or opt-in for.
We're only, we're only saying we'll take, we'll take Option D if.
They take.
If, if the lawsuit of the waiving, waiving the attorney client privilege win.
Right, and, and it's, right, and that's pending the court's outcome, whether they.
Right, so if it doesn't happen, we're not opting in. So I, that, I don't understand what you're saying.
I, I just, I just, for seeing, clearly, it's, you know, it'll be in the court's hands that, that it would just be the court saying, well, it's, it's not unconstitutional for them to ask you to waive your rights. That's, that's what I'm.
Sure, and if the court decides that, right, then.
We rescind it.
Then we, we pull, we pull and say, no, thank you.
Here's your money.
Yeah, and, and I still don't like that the, that the language would still be in there about the definition of a mass casualty event, and that the governor would have the, you know, total control of conducting the investigation independent. I just, I don't like it.
Well, but, but, but the, but the reality is on that, and the, the whole conversation we've had all along since 31AA came about has all been about the, the unconstitutionality of the waiving our rights. We've been, that's been our whole beef, but the whole, the mass casualty, I agree with you on that, but it's, it's not the, the governor didn't create this law, this was legislators that did. So to me, the thing that has to happen is that people have to, have to get to the point where the law gets changed, fight that battle of it, because it's ridiculous. There, there's no point that that should have been done in the deep dark of the night, where nobody knew that'd happen and all of a sudden there it is, because that's, that's how it came about.
What's with the time lock part, where it's open-ended, is that part of that also?
Yeah, the one.
That constitutional part?
That's a good.
For the waiving of the rights?
No, for that part.
So they can come back after.
They could go back, or they can go forward.
That's, that's still.
That would stay.
There's not a defined, there's not a defined.
It's still.
And that's where, right, right now, the politics of this is, our legislators, whether locally or anywhere else in the state, could have, while the few days they have left in session, stood up and said, I want to do an amendment to 31A to take out the waiving of the privilege, define mass casualty, because I really believe it was what the tragedy that happened at Oxford was what the intent was, and that the, or whatever needs to be cleaned up in that language. They didn't. There's not even enough time between now and the end of, I mean, maybe if they do some secret deal in the middle of the night, and they've done it before in lame duck sessions, but they aren't doing that. Now that a court case has been filed, the judge's going to rule whether that part, and they only, it's only the waiving of the privilege that is being challenged. If, God forbid, something happens and a district does not believe that's a mass casualty, and again, it's a fight on the football field, three people get injured. By the definition of the current law, that could be a mass casualty.
We'd have to bring in.
We would, we would have to fight that law and say, no, that's not, you don't get to automatically do your own investigation. We would have to challenge that, and at that point, it's going to come out in the courts whether that part will be constitutional or not.
The thing, the, the truth of the matter is, is that they also, I mean, they're going to conduct an investigation, it's just how cooperative we have to be, but, I mean, they're going to, they're, they're going to do an investigation, I mean, if there's a mass casualty.
And, and I don't know of any district who says they aren't going to cooperate.
Right.
They're all cooperating. The issue is, is that the fiduciary responsibility you guys have is, you have to also look out for the district.
Right.
So the decision you have, the conversation you have with your attorney, you're looking, just like, you know, if you know someone who's gone through the court case, well, you could take a plea deal, or you could go do this, or so forth, you have those conversations with your attorney.
Correct.
And you figure out what's the best strategy for you. That's exactly what here, but what this law says, sorry, you guys don't get to do that. All that's open. If someone wants to sue you. They can sue you, they can listen to all the conversations you have with your attorney. That's wrong, and that's why they focus the narrow scope on the, this part of the law is unconstitutional. I believe the next step is to get legislators to stand up and.
Take the rest of it as.
It's got to be fixed. You've got to define it, because it just can't be anybody's willy-nilly definition of what a mass casualty is. Or how long do you go back, as you said, does it go back, you know, four years ago, we have, right on the football field, someone got hurt, and they want to do something now. There's no parameters on this.
Right, I do have one quick question, okay? So if, if we vote to, if this goes through, Option D goes through, or whatever, Resolution D, and we, then we get a decision from the court or whatever that's in favor of the district, okay, where they're not, okay, we can't, they're, we can't, you know, they're not going to waive our rights to our attorney client privilege, do we, we still have the opportunity to rescind this decision until December 30th?
If the courts rule that.
Only if they rule.
If that part of the law is unconstitutional.
Yeah.
That's thrown out.
Right.
The rest of the law stays, so we get the money, but that part isn't.
I understand, but what my question, I understand, but I think you didn't, I'm not sure if you understood my question.
But we change our mind.
If we decide, yeah, so we, but we could rescind this decision that we're making today up until the 30th, no matter what that decision is in court.
Yeah, the. Yeah, the document, the document that you're approving, whether it's A, B, C, or D.
Do you not understand my question?
That, that does not... If you, if you pass Resolution D that says, alright, we're going...
There's nothing saying we can't rescind it.
We're gonna decline, we're gonna opt in, we're gonna opt in.
Yeah.
But if the courts rule something, then we're opting out. They rule against it. What this has just given me direction, say tomorrow, press the button to opt in. Or don't do anything and we're opting out.
Gotcha.
What it's also saying is the courts rule in our favor. We're not doing anything because they ruled that unconstitutional.
Okay.
If they rule in the state's favor, I don't need your action. I'm going back in and opting out. We're not taking the money.
Okay, got it.
Okay. If you pass D and later on you guys say, "You know something? We don't wanna do that." Even if they rule in our favor, we don't want the money?
We wanna rescind it.
You would have to do a special board meeting and issue a new resolution saying, "This is what you're directing me to do." Basically, what A, B, C, and D are telling, "Which way do you wanna go? How do you want me to press the button to submit?"
And I guess for me, what's on the table for the court hearing is not enough for me to not, to wanna be in it. It's just too much I want out of it. And I, I guess I just, even that little bit about the Constitution, there's just so much other stuff that I would think that that last option you just spoke of would, would be where I would wanna go.
Well, that's, I mean, you have a special board meeting and rescind D? What would give, what information would you get? Once the court rules issue, what information would you get that would change your mind over D versus C, B, or A?
Just more of that language taken out of there altogether, rather than just the...
That's not...
But that, that, I mean, that's not gonna happen.
That's not gonna happen.
So that other language, the definition or the timeline, has to be done legislatively. Alright, someone in the legislature has to do an amendment to the bill to make that change. None of those other two are valued as unconstitutional for the attorney's side. I'm sorry, I cut you off, I'm very sorry.
No, 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 I, I, I was just, you know, reaffirming what you were saying is that, yeah, regardless of which option you take, that other language will not change, you know, based off the court's decision.
Correct.
Unless they rule the whole law is unconstitutional and they, nobody gets 31A money. It's 31AA. They gotta go back to the drawing board, the legislature.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Also, the lawsuit is asking about that privilege language, because the belief of every attorney firm, Trum, O'Reilly, Wensill, Collins and Blaha, Miller, Cantfield, all believe that is unconstitutional. What you're asking someone to give up violates the Constitution. That's why they did a very narrow scope, because we're in a very short timeframe. This should never, to be honest?
Makes sense.
This should never have come to this far if the legislators did the budget process in open, not three people in a room passing a resolution and asking legislators to vote on a budget that they never even read.
Right.
Sorry, I'm so blocked, you guys know that. But this should never have gotten this far.
No.
Okay, do we have any other questions before we vote?
Well, I guess, I guess I just wanna throw out a question then. So if you're, if you're leaning to not vote for this, so Raymond, you sent us that email today. So is it, is it about your email? Or is it truly about the fact that the quote-unquote mass casualty language?
All of it.
So it's, it's all of it? So you, because in your email, you talk about the fact that you don't want us to waste money on safety and mental health stuff, correct?
That's, that's not why I said it all.
That's not what you said in the email?
That, yeah, I did not say that we shouldn't be wasting money on that. That's not what I said.
What did you say then?
I defer you back to my email.
Do you, do you want me to pull it up and read it back to you?
If that's what you feel you want to do.
I do not support the opt-in option in any capacity. I do not want to risk losing not only my own personal rights, but the rights of each one of you, our district staff and employees. There is too much risk and uncertainty here for what is being offered. Additionally, the community members that I have spoken with do not feel that it is up to the district to provide additional mental health services outside of the standard school council. Our schools should be focusing on the fundamentals of education, such as reading, writing, arithmetic, history, and social studies. Those are the areas that we should be focusing our efforts, not looking for additional money to promote more mental health programs. Having an SRO, which is a school resource officer, is extremely important to the community. And if we are no longer eligible to receive state grant money because we don't opt into this, then we should look into other options. If we need to reprioritize other expenses to make that happen, then that's what we should do. If we can spend over $20,000 on refinishing shelving units and cabinets, we should be able to afford an SRO to keep our students, staff, and facilities safe. So what did I misunderstand?
I didn't say that that stuff's a waste.
Okay. What did you say then? In your words, that I just read?
You just read it. You just read it.
Okay. Okay.
I just have one thought. Does anyone have any concern that our state might do something screwy? Or do we trust the people in Lansing that they will change their mind?
Well, I will tell you...
Well, who knows? It keeps changing every... I know, that's my one little piece in there that...
It's related to what?
Well, if they, okay, so let's see. What if they, they take it out or they put it in or whatever? Can they change their mind between now and December 30th? Or, I don't know, I just don't, I'm uncomfortable a little bit, a tiny bit, because I just don't know that I trust...
I don't have faith that it's gonna be resolved by December 30th. So why...
I will tell you, that's a very good dinner. It will not be resolved by December 30th. It will not.
At the state level?
At the state level, going through the hearings, the law writing out, sending all that. I, I, maybe we'll get a good dinner.
Unless it all gets thrown out, right?
Well, I think if, but I think if the, if the judge throws this out, rules the entire thing unconstitutional, you're not getting something before December 30th. You're getting something after January 1st, you're gonna come back and supplement the bill. And every district's gonna be wanting, "Hey, wait, we got these expenses. We opted in. We got this money that is on our December State Aid payment, and now it's being taken away on our January State Aid payment, which may come back in a May State Aid payment." That's the other part, I mean...
That's what I was gonna...
I think it's gonna, if anything's gonna change, it's gonna happen after January 1st. Would be my best guess, given how our legislators work. Otherwise...
Well, we would know if that's coming after the hearings on the 19th and the 20th.
Yeah, and the hearings on the, I think the judges, the agents will know on the 19th. You're gonna know whether it was thrown out or whether a part was unconstitutional. And if the part is unconstitutional, which would let letter Resolution D, still allow us to collect the money, then we as a collective group need to work with our legislators and our local person, Representative Green, and say, "Introduce a bill and clean this up." And whether it's her or any other legislator, whoever's gonna stand up and do it, but it needs to be cleaned up. They've known about this. They've known about this since this budget passed. Didn't do anything. It's, you know, our ISD and with the partnership with the other, had to file a lawsuit to get something done quickly. They could have fixed this when they adopted the budget October 4th, when they adopted it? Okay, by the end of October, they could have done something.
October.
It was October. It was October. They had that partial, wasn't a shutdown, continuation bill. But October, they could have. They could have did something all in the month of November, but they didn't. They went on their two-week break. They're on their Thanksgiving holiday right now. I mean, they could have done something.
And what I think is ridiculous is I heard comments from legislators that acknowledge the fact that, you know, these school districts are over-analyzing what we wrote, and that's not what we meant. Okay, well then take five seconds and clarify it.
Tell us what you meant.
Then tell us what you meant, then why, you understand that there's confusion. Why not sit down and clarify it and take the time to clarify? I would, I would hope, I, I mean, wishful thinking, right? That the judge would say, "Okay, well, let's throw this out," but also mandate that this crap gets clarified in the process, not only of taking this out, but also mandating that something be clarified.
Well, and you can, you can respect the idea behind, obviously, what they were trying to do. You can respect the idea behind, but it's not what it is. It's just, it just doesn't work. It just doesn't work. The string's attached, it just doesn't work. There had to be a better way.
Well, if you notice there's confusion and then you don't do anything to clarify it, that makes it freaky.
Right. You want schools to be states and all the, all the stuff that you want, but then, then you put that in it, it just, it just doesn't make sense.
And I think this is not just public schools. Rokeo Schools have signed on this lawsuit. Charter Schools have signed on it, because it affects all of them. If they take money with a general fund and, rather than the school aid fund, it's all part of it. I guess the, the piece that we're having is the deadline dates.
Right.
In order for us to even be considered the money, I gotta do something by December 4th, 11:59. Say, "I'm in." If we choose "I'm in" and we wanna change it, I have to December 30th to change it, pull out, with no, no issues. We didn't waive anything, we didn't give up something, it's no issue. That, that's what Resolution D gives us the biggest flexibility. And to go back here, if you guys wanna say we wanna formally do something, we said, you know, win our, you can do that. We just have to hold a special day before December 30th.
But then what, what would be the point of that, then? Well, I'm not sure that there would be, I guess. If they, mine wasn't necessarily in regards to this lawsuit, but like, what if they, like, if, if this part gets thrown out and then they quickly throw something together?
That's what I was thinking.
Put another wrench in it.
Yes, that's what I was, that's where I was going. Right, that's what I'm saying, like, so, so it doesn't...
Exactly. I get it.
See, I think... At least the door's there.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
I would, I would say the odds of that happening are stronger if we were in '26. Because now you got that lame duck session after it, where we don't really...
I don't necessarily, yeah, I didn't necessarily think that was gonna happen, but like, I'm just trying to make sure...
But the reality that we're all sitting here is...
That's where I was going.
None of us have faith that the state's doing what they shouldn't be doing. That, that's the reality we're living in, so...
And we know we would...
While we all agree on that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes.
So Margaret, your motion was for it to pass D.
Yes, it was.
So are we all set here? Because I'm gonna do a roll call vote on this. Okay, here we go. Margaret?
Aye.
Candace?
No, Danielle.
I'm sorry, thank you. Danielle?
Aye.
Okay, Candace?
I have to say no.
Okay. Sandy?
Aye.
Raymond?
Nay.
I vote aye, motion will carry. Okay, next, action item is I'm looking for a motion for the approval of a three-year contract extension between Richmond Community Schools and the Richmond Administrators Association.
I'm going to accept the recommendation of superintendent and approve a three-year contract between the Board of Education of Richmond Community Schools and Richmond Administrators Association beginning August 1st, 2026 through July 31st, 2029, as outlined in the attached documentation.
Support. Sandy? Any discussion?
Other than, this is really good. Thank you, Brian, and thank you to the administrators as well.
Thank you, Sarah, this is her first official one.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Any other discussion? Okay, this will be a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Raymond?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of evaluation for our superintendent.
I move to approve the superintendent's evaluation for the 2025 calendar year with the determination that the superintendent has met his established goals. Upon approval, this action sheet and the corresponding board meeting minutes shall be placed in the superintendent's personnel file to document the evaluation outcome and verification of goals met.
Do I support?
Support.
Thank you, Candace. Any discussion? Candace, a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Raymond?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Okay, we're now gonna have our student report. So Elizabeth, you're on.
So the high school last week, students attended a Michigan career class where they learned about careers, manufacturing, construction, technology, and healthcare. It is a hands-on experience that students always find very engaging. Fastment Night was held last Wednesday at the Club of 2026. This year, this year, there has been an increase in college families and post-secondary support for our graduate students. We encourage our families to attend as many events as possible as they help support their students' next path. Please contact Ms. Krampson if you have any questions or need additional guidance. Our extracurriculars have been very busy. We have people compete on Friday, interact, call up and volunteer at Metal Lodge, and student government has been running a canned food drive during first hour classes. At the middle school, our must-celebrate Veterans Day with another successful assembly. Our SC parent, Mr. Michael Vazares, was our guest speaker in a moving and meaningful speech. Quails of valor wrapped 11 veterans in their beautiful quilt, and our band choir showcased their hard work by providing wonderful music. Our students' spectators are outstanding, helping make sure this was a truly amazing event. Fourth and fifth grade students are experiencing a positive response to intervention each morning.